I would like to call to order the Bothell Planning Commission. Tonight is Wednesday, January 24, 2018. All commissioners are present and accounted for. No non-agenda public comments. With that, we have four sets of minutes to approve. Give everybody a couple of seconds to look at those if you haven't already. Does anybody have anything on regards to the minutes? I have something that I might want to add. It's kind of a small detail, but on the October 11th. I don't know if it's necessary or not, but under the public meeting, you said the chair opened the third public hearing. Because the other ones say initial, second, and this is the third one. I don't know. I don't know if it'll be helpful or not. Just under the public meeting, opened the third public hearing regarding the update of the Bothell Housing Strategy. Because wasn't it a continuation of the minutes or the...
You know, I'd have to go back and see if we did that as a continued public hearing or as just a public meeting.
I'll double check that.
If not, I have nothing else with regards to the minutes. Anybody have a motion?
I've moved to approve all the minutes presented. Second?
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Okay. Minutes are approved as stands. And any new business? No new business? Okay, with that, we will, there's no public hearing tonight. With that, we'll move into the study session, which is the draft of the 2018 Planning Docket Preview. We're joined tonight with two of our senior planners, Dave Boyd and Bruce Blackburn, who are going to give us a presentation with regards to the docket for this year.
So, this year, thank you, Chair and Commissioners. This year, we're handling the docket a little bit differently again. Last year, for the first time, at least in our memory, we did engage the Planning Commission in the docket discussion by, first of all, having a preview similar to tonight's, just out of Planning Commission study session. Then we had a joint study session with council and further discussion on it before council held a public hearing and adopted the docket. For scheduling reasons, and one reason we did it that way was because Planning Commission hadn't been involved with the docket before. This year, mostly because of scheduling reasons, we're not going to be doing a joint study session. It's going to go from this session to a council public hearing on March 6. And of course, Planning Commissioners are welcome to come, and we would like to have at least one be prepared to speak to any discussion items that come up tonight. And if more than three of you choose to come, just let us know that we, so that we can make sure to notice that as a public meeting as well.
Hey, Dave, is that the February 6 meeting that we were talking about previously?
No, it's now March 6, so we weren't able to get it on until March 6. So, there is a bit of, more of a gap between this meeting and that one than we anticipated. So, and a lot of this is, we carried this over from last year. So, you've had the experience last year of going through the docket. You understand, I think, pretty well what it is. To a large extent, it's going to form your work program for 2018. The, last year, we did complete the UW Bothell Cascadia Campus Master Plan, and that was completed in November of last year. The UW Regents and Cascadia trustees just approved it, so that now is finalized. And so, campus development will now move forward under that master plan and those agreements. We completed planning code amendments in response to PRC, PSRC comments to our 2015 periodic planning code update. And those two items, the campus master plan and those PSRC planning code, or plan amendments made our, consisted of our annual comprehensive plan amendments that were adopted in December. We adopted clustering code amendments that Planning Commission worked on. The Planning Commission recommendations for the remainder of the 2016 miscellaneous downtown subarea code amendments were adopted, at least council adopted the building height measurement, building orientation, and home occupation and live-work code amendments for the downtown subarea. This isn't a doc, wasn't a docket item, but we worked with, staff worked with the UW Architecture Department storefront studio and completed that project. And there's information on the website about the products that came out of that, some really interesting ideas developed by the students. We completed council review of the Phase 1 downtown parking study. We'll get into that a little bit more because there's still some work to be done this year on that item. We completed, actually, in just a couple of weeks ago, or last week, code amendments making final plots, final plat's approval and administrative action. And also last week, council adopted essentially the Planning Commission recommendations on tree retention with some minor tweaks. So, it was a busy year, and as you know, it got so busy with us with all the council items toward the end that we weren't able to bring any of the remaining 2017 dockets to Planning Commission. So, we will, some of those carryover items will be part of this, or are part of this year's docket, as you've probably already noticed. So, the docket that went into the packet, very slightly from the one that I just handed out, it includes three mandatory items and other significant work tasks that we wanted to highlight here. The Canyon Park Subarea update plan is going forward. We went through a visioning effort in 2017 that's actually carrying over a little bit into 2018, and we're still looking for funding to move on with the more serious planning effort. Not that the visioning wasn't serious, but there's a lot of work to be done just in terms of code changes, working with the stakeholders up there to implement a plan that will, that will move that vision forward. We, Planning Commission finished their work on the housing strategy update, and it is scheduled to go to council in March. Actually, I don't have the precise date in front of me, but I'll be getting in touch with Planning Commissioners to make sure that there's a representative there. And again, Arch will be carrying a lot of that load, but there's also a significant staff involvement there. And within the docket of code amendments, there are potential code amendments that are coming out of the housing strategy. We have a set of code amendments related to downtown, related to development services improvements that also are a carryover from last year, and we've added to those somewhat. And finally, code amendments, additional code amendments and updates within the downtown And actually, that's incorrect. That's the items up 7 through 10. Last part of that phrase is from last year, and so there aren't any, any that still need, well, there is one that needs to be initiated, but the property owner request is a carryover from last year. So, in this latest draft, the revised draft, we have done some further prioritization, moved all the mandatory items up front, and then, as last year, each docket item is assigned a number, a description, identifying who requested the amendment, whether it came from staff or private property owner, council, Planning Commission. There's a short analysis and a staff recommendation for each item. Now, all of these items are important and worthy of initiation and attention, but as we discussed last year, we're still in this situation where with the reorganization of the Development Services Group, the long-range planning team is still short-staffed, so we're going to be scrambling to get through these items, and we are going to need to do some further prioritization as we go through, and some of these items might need to be pushed to 2019. So, as I said, we've listed the mandatory items up front, then the high, what we feel staff, from a staff perspective, are the high priority items to be done in 2018, if time and schedule allows, and then medium priority items that could wait until 2019. And then, do not consider further. There's one item, I think, that tentatively we've suggested not considering further, but we're still also waiting for some more input from the Parks Department on that. So, as we said before, this will be going to council on March 6. So, just wanted to put in a few images and to explain some of the higher priority items. Bruce, feel free to jump in here on Canyon Park. Bruce has been leading the effort there.
Well, yes, as a matter of fact, the Canyon Park is a regional growth center, that it's really important for the city, both from an economic development as well as an employment provision. And essentially, what we have is, we had a need to update this subarea plan that includes the regional growth center, frankly, because it really hasn't been addressed since the late 1980s. And so, we really need to upgrade some of the things that we have within our subarea plan, as well as get a better feel for what the stakeholders in the area are interested in. And in fact, the last four months, we have spent a considerable amount of time on this visioning process, and that includes a bunch of meetings with stakeholders of the area, including very important employers, property owners, as well as all kinds of different sizes of business owners' representation. So, we've got a lot of really great data that we're going to be providing to the council and the commission a little bit later on in the first quarter of this year, once we get the final visioning document completed. It's very exciting stuff. In fact, if you go to the next slide, Dave, some of the things that we've learned here are just fascinating, and I want to, this is just one of the aspects that I wanted to bring to your attention, from the standpoint that we have some incredibly important employers out there who are doing amazing research and biomedical and biotechnology advancements to our science, namely, a lot of biotechnology folks that are doing major improvements to cancer treatments and a lot of other types of things. It's just phenomenal what we have in here. There are over 4,700 jobs in this, in this regional growth center that are devoted to manufacturing of those type of products, anywhere from biotechnology things to medical device items, you know, basic ultrasound and some of those other really sophisticated tools. So, it was really exciting to find out how really impressive and how really endemic that those people are. So, it's been an incredibly successful area. We just need to do a little bit more about making it more of an urban center so we can have some residential encompassed with that. So, anyway, that's all I wanted to enter, just a little bit of a teaser for you folks. Oh, and just wanted to, this is some of the very latest stuff we've got for the final vision. We're actually trying to apply some areas that are, make really logical sense for a little bit more of the mixed-use type opportunity zones, where it makes a lot of sense to have these residential business combinations, particularly along the areas where we have a lot of good transit, and we're going to get into that really in detail. But we have a lot of very promising transportation improvements, particularly with the bus rapid transit system that's coming in.
Bruce, before we move on, I can't read the key. Can you tell me what those colors?
Well, some of the colors, the purple color identifies area that makes really a lot of sense to have as a employment center, you know, to keep the business park kind of a concept. The pink areas are more along the lines of where some of the mixed-use areas are more logical area. And you can see those are located more adjacent to the Bothell Everett Highway and some of the other transportation corridors, where we're going to have a lot of these bus services come in. So, the concept there would be that there are probably some logical areas that make sense to keep as business park, and some areas that we really want to focus, of course, on this mixed-use type of approach.
Can I ask one quick follow-up question?
Yes.
Do we meet our population targets with this new...
We'll have a discussion about that later on, yes. In fact, and one of the things that we're going to do is that this is a vision. This is basically, okay, what do you stakeholders think makes a lot of sense out here? And this is kind of way, this is, this is the way, direction that that stakeholders' list is going to be driving this. We also have to make sure we have our other necessary requirements that we meet, particularly the growth targets, population and those kind of things. So, we've got to have the long discussion about how all that comes together, particularly the capital improvement projects as well. So, there's a lot of new stuff that's going to have to happen. This is just kind of a fun exercise. Okay, well, what makes the most sense out here? What is, what are the stakeholders feeling about this area?
So, moving along, just to detail some of the downtown code amendments that we're hoping to look into further today. Parking is a carryover. We did make a recommendation to council, but they deferred its decision until this year. So, that remains on our work plan, but the larger parking management plan that we're hoping the council will, will fund and move forward on is going to be led by our new Assistant City Manager. So, community development will still be part of that discussion, along with police and the courts, but won't be leading that. So, that hopefully will help in terms of workload going forward. The private property owner-initiated code amendment that I referred to is this proposal to remove the three-story 35-foot overlay on a portion of the general downtown corridor. Show us some more detail of that shortly. That developer is actually moving forward with this three-story townhome development, so is not pushing this, this particular code amendment, but it was something that was identified in the housing strategy discussions as a, an opportunity to impose affordable housing requirement in exchange for that additional capacity. Similarly, a few years back, we looked at removing the downtown transition density limit. At that time, we, we didn't look at adding an affordable housing requirement along with that, but council did retain some of the 20-unit-per-acre density limit, and so that's another opportunity to create some area where we could create an incentive for affordable housing development and a requirement for it. Then, in 2015, during the periodic planning code update, we did have some discussion with Planning Commission about this remnant of general commercial zoning that council chose to retain very late in the downtown plan process. It was requested by a resident adjacent to that, and they went along with that request without a lot of analysis by staff. And it's a bit problematic because we have this one piece of citywide zoning in the middle of the downtown plan, this completely different zoning code, form-based zoning code, and it's, it's a little bit confusing about how some of the other provisions of the downtown plan apply to that area. Plus, we've recently heard from at least two property owners in that area who feel that the, that the GC zoning is, is too restrictive and, and they're not going to be able to redevelop their, their property. And so, there is support among some of the property owners for going, changing that to SR 522 corridor, the zoning that's across 522 and that was originally proposed for that area. And then, Planning Commission also recommended that council initiate some code amendments dealing with public open space as a result of your deliberations on the setbacks and building separation issues. They didn't initiate them when they, when they took up those considerations, but deferred it to the 2018 docket, so we will be bringing that back. And here is, is the map of that general downtown corridor, three-story overlay. It's the crosshatched area along Beardsley, most of it's along Beardsley Boulevard, but also a portion off of Valley View and Circle Drive 108th. Most of that has already been developed with more dense apartment housing, but there's still a few vacant parcels there. And, and the proposal wouldn't necessarily include all of that area. It might, we might be more selective about where we lift that, that overlay. Back to Bruce.
Thank you. Essentially, what the city of Bothell has is, underneath state law, there's a requirement that we have a special set of overlay regulations that apply to shoreline areas. And within the city of Bothell, those shoreline areas are along Swamp Creek, North Creek, and the Summerville River, and it's any land that's within 200 feet of those water bodies, or any associated flood, flood plain, or an associated wetland. And basically, that equates to almost a square mile within our planning area. You know, it's basically about 6% of the planning area, so it's an important document. The Department of Ecology issues new Washington Administrative Code provisions just about every year regarding these areas. And what they have identified is that because there have been so many that have been issued since 2012, which is when the city did its last update to the shoreline master program, the ecology identified, you know, we really should have everybody go through a process of updating their master programs to reflect these new administrative code provisions. So, that's basically something we're going to have to do this year. The actual due date for the city of Bothell is June, the end of June of 2019. However, because these type of items take a long time, we want to get that process started this year. It'll probably be happening in the second half of the year. This is not an item that is ordinarily assigned to the Planning Commission. This is usually something that the shoreline board, the city of Bothell has a shoreline board that basically advises the city council on items regarding shoreline management and the Shoreline Management Act. And so, we're going to basically be having to recreate that board, if you would. But I just want to let the commission know that this is, again, one of those items that you'll be seeing staff spend a lot of time on. So, you may not see me for a while, quite a bit of while in the latter part of this year, and that's mostly because I'll be working on this particular item. But I just wanted to bring it up to your speed. One more click, please. And I just want to kind of show you how that shoreline jurisdiction works. Basically, you can see the water body and then 200 feet on either side, or flood plain or an associated wetland, so the jurisdiction line can be quite wide. In some areas, it really is. We have very significant areas of flood plain that are also regulated by the Shorelines Management Act.
Is it the, do you think it's DOE's? Do you think it's DOE's intent to do this roughly every five to six years from here on out, or is this just a special case?
We anticipate that this is going to become something that's along the lines of a periodic update, very similar to what is done for our general comprehensive plan, so we think that that will be occurring. It's just that this one is happening a little bit sooner than what we would ordinarily hope, because the idea is you'd hope you do it about every eight years. We're going to do this one in about five years, but, you know, that's okay. I mean, they have enough significant changes to the Washington Administrative Code that we really should do some updates in that document.
Quick question, Bruce. Now that we've daylighted Horse Creek, is that ever going to fall under this...
It will not, no. In shoreline jurisdiction requires that the flow of a creek or a stream or a water body be at least 20 cubic feet per second, and Horse Creek doesn't come anywhere near that number. Not even close.
So, so tonight, the objective is we're just to give you this presentation, provide you an opportunity to ask questions and provide feedback on, for the preparation of the March 6 council public hearing. Like I said, we're, this, this is a work in progress, so we're certainly open to, to any ideas you have or suggestions you might have. And I have, and I guess, since we did add a couple of new items on the revision that I sent you this afternoon, if it's okay with Planning Commission, I would suggest going through that. Hope you didn't do extensive notes on your hard copy of the previous one, but, and I can pull that up on, on screen as well.
Thanks a lot, Dave, Bruce, for the presentation. I really appreciate the packets you guys always bring us. There's a lot of work put into them. This one is, is great, too, because it had a lot of visual items that you can kind of see what you guys are talking about as well. So, thanks for that. I have some questions, but I'm going to hold off on mine, and we'll just, I guess we'll just kind of take this time to see if any of the commissioners have any questions for Dave and Bruce.
General questions, and then we can get into specific questions about specific items as we go through.
Just a general question. So, long-term planning staff, you said that there's some transitions. What's your guys' capabilities this year? I mean, are we, you looking to add another person, or what's happening?
We would love to, but currently, there's not budget for that, and as you know, we, we will have a new director coming on board soon. We're just, we're about to start the interview process for that. So, in a way, we're...
Actually, I don't know about that. What is that?
Oh, so, Tom Burdette retired at the, well, actually, ended in mid-December, so as of the end of the year, and Gary Assler has been appointed as the interim director. And so, we're actually even more shorthanded than, than we were before for now. And so, we've advertised, and they've created a shortlist of candidates for that new position, and interviews are going to be happening in the next month or so, and the hope is to have somebody on board by the first of March.
Follow-up question on that is, is the 2.65 FTE to 2.1, is that a result of Gary being put into that interim spot?
Correct.
And is that coming back if and when the new directors brought in?
That'll be up to the new director and city manager and council, whether they will create another position or somehow reorganize that. But the anticipation is that Gary will, for now, go back to being Development Services Manager.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think it's pretty apparent by the minutes we just approved, we only had four meetings as a Planning Commission over the last six months of 2017, and now they're reconvening the shoreline board, and you said it's going to take a significant amount of your time. I guess, without asking if this is by design, do you expect we'd have about one meeting a year? I mean, sorry, one meeting a month? That wasn't on purpose. This year, or...
No, I, I, I think, once council, well, a lot will depend on how they, what direction we get from council on the docket, but there are a lot of items there that would naturally come back to Planning Commission for further consideration.
I also want to let you know that once we get rolling on Canyon Park, it's going to be pretty intense. There are going to be a lot of Planning Commission hearings, there's going to be a lot of city council hearings, and that is a really important aspect that we're going to be doing, and you're going to get into it very deeply, particularly the inter, interrelationship between the capital projects we need, infrastructure, transportation, as well as, of course, the land uses and the design provisions and things like that. So, that's going to get pretty intense here later on this year. So that's going to get pretty intense here later on this year.
One last general question. Just talking about resources for the year, is there any way to put rough hours towards some of these items? Just to kind of influence on which one to take?
I, I started to, and then I realized that it is so difficult because even the most simple code amendment can suddenly blossom into a very significant work program. So it's really hard to do that. But I can tell you that of the 24 or 2,500 hours that we have available to us, there's some items, well Canyon Park, I mean, we're talking, that's a 600 or 700 hour type of an item. So, you know, you, we've got some real significant work task hours. But it is hard to say, okay, well, this is going to take us 150 hours because we just don't know what we're going to get into. Well, here's a good example. We've identified a discussion when the tree retention provision were up before council a week ago. It said, well, you know, maybe we should look at a holistic change to our landscape codes. And of course, we can identify that as a big work task, but we're just not exactly sure where that's going to involve. So it is hard to identify numbers and we could put numbers, but it's like, well, who knows?
So we will be bringing that kind of a work plan and, and a analysis or a projection of hours that will be required to council on, on March 6th. We, we just weren't able to bring it, bring that to, to you all. And I do want to clarify, when he says that we have 24 to 2,500 hours available, that's both of us. That's not each.
Really? 2,500 hours. Are we moving on to specific questions at this point?
If you're ready to.
Is there?
Sounds good.
I'd throw one out there, the, the item. Six, about the, the lean process applied to Development Services Initiative. Is it, are these kind of the A through F kind of an all or nothing thing? Or can individual pieces be pulled out and put into the docket as necessary? Or can they be, and is the A through F a priority for these? And if so, can that be adjusted within this particular item?
I don't think it was intended that the A through the F meant any have certain priority assigned to them. I think what this is, this is just identifying the items that the Development Services Group has said, look, these are really important features that we think would help both our operations as well as our, our customers' operations. And, and we've just identified these as no particular order. And I'll, I'll just say here, the number A, which has established a site plan review process, that's a big work task. And that's going to take a long time because we have to do a lot of code integration between not just community development, but also public works, fire, and buildings. So there's a lot of work to involve with that one. Number of lots from a short plat process from five, from four to nine, that's something that's going to have to have a lot of policy discussion. We're going to have to understand what the ramifications are of that. However, conversely, the expansion of minor modifications to the condition use permit process, that's a really relatively straightforward one. I mean, that one is very small. So that's the gamut we have here. We have some that might take hundreds of hours. We have some that might only take, you know, a few days. So that's where we have in that program. So what you may see is you may see us bringing back one or two of these items to the commission fairly soon.
As this, outside of this, so it'd be like a bringing in one of the sub-items as an individual?
There you go, yep.
Okay.
Exactly, yes.
And do you have a feel for in, in time, in terms of the order of how much time each one, how much effort and time each one of these is going to take? Is it, is it roughly in that order right now? Or is, can you give us a rough idea?
Good question, good question. A and B certainly would be the more extensive hour actions, particularly setting up a new site plan review process. Basically what that would involve is, you know, of course, we have an entitlement process which basically says, okay, this project is approved if you meet our other regulations, like a subdivision or a planned unit development or a condition use permit. That's kind of what we're visioning here. So then applicant only has to bring in a site plan with some general building elevations and things like that to say, okay, generally you're okay, instead of having to go through the full grading permit supplemental, which is what they have to do now, which is preparation of very detailed plans, very expensive engineering. And there may be some fundamental flaw with that design that will cause all kinds of issues. Okay, well, the project's not viable. And there should, so there should be some way to let an applicant know and for the staff to know, identify really important issues before you go to that huge expense.
So that would might be parallel to like a preliminary plat process or something like that?
It'll probably be along those lines, yes. What we'll do is we'll identify the, the minimum supplemental requirements, and we'll come up, come up with an idea of how the staff would review that, and then we'll go with that.
And the, the pre-app process isn't, isn't detailed enough to provide that?
No, not, not even close, yes.
Okay. So then B through, or excuse me, C through, E, F would be kind of on that, kind of easier to push through in a short time?
I believe so, yeah. The noise things might be a little bit more tricky, but, but the others are certainly much less intense.
And.
So some of them may, may be grouped together as, as we come through with a group of miscellaneous code amendments. And also item 13, which is a carryover from last year. As a separate item, we might decide that that fits in with these two.
Okay. I, one of these that I'm particularly interested in is this, is item B. I'm curious to know what, you mentioned that there's, that's a pretty big policy decision. I, I, I don't understand, totally understand why that's the case. Is there, it seems to be a pretty, pretty much everybody's going that direction. It, to me, it seems like kind of low-hanging fruit, but obviously I'm incorrect on that. Is there, any, can you expand on that a little bit?
Low-hanging fruit maybe from a technical standpoint. But again, you know, you're talking about changing a, a situation where in the past, a six or seven or eight lot plat was a public hearing process. Now we're going to go to an administrative process. So there's not quite as much as noticing. You don't have the ability to, you know, have your, your concerns heard by the hearing examiner and things like that. So that, that's an important policy discussion that I think we should have.
Okay, yeah. And I'm not suggesting otherwise. I just wanted to get a feel for what, kind of what you meant by that. Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
I, I guess I'd like to say that, you know, all the time we spent last year on the housing strategies and whatnot, and the folks that we had come in and give us feedback. I think one of the consistent pieces of feedback we got about how can we make things easier for some of these nonprofit developers to come in and do affordable housing was, was number six here. And so I guess just throwing my weight on that one is, I think that should be a really important one for us to push ahead on this year. Number six, what we were just talking about.
Which particular portion of it? What, just the whole, or the?
I guess that's more of a, a general editorial on what we heard from, from different groups was that they want more predictability when they go into a city and are going to build one of these, you know, projects where we're going to have some affordable housing. And, you know, they're not necessarily, I get the impression that they're a little more regional maybe. So they may not have done a project in your city necessarily. So they're, they're kind of spreading out maybe more than a conventional developer. So anyway, I would like the city to take that to heart on number six there. And then I guess another question on, on going back to the affordable housing, Dave and Bruce. So we spent a lot of time last year on that. And we were, I think we were more focused on a couple of different areas. It was more of a sub-area specific. I'm, I guess I'm talking about affordable housing, part of the housing strategy. And it was more related to rezones. Is this, is this item a zoom-out type item? That's going to address citywide, or is this building we already did? Or how does that, how do you see that playing itself out?
The direction we're going now is, as, as you recall, we, we did try to sort of piggyback some citywide foundational regulations on some specific rezone actions. And there was some pushback on that. And, and basically we've been directed to start with the citywide foundational, not tied to any specific rezone. So we, we hope that that, that council will, since, since Planning Commission has already made, done that work and, and made that as part of their recommendation tied to both the Nike Hill and South Riverside code amendments, that council will be able to hear that fairly shortly after they review the housing strategy plan. And then we can then proceed with wherever we do a, a rezone or any other, or a code amendment that adds capacity, that we can apply those, that, those, that code and.
So what is your sense, I guess maybe both of you of, you know, the work we did was pretty focused, I guess? A little bit more area specific. Is that, is that work that we did going to be able to be leveraged pretty well? Or do you think it's going to be a kind of step back and take a bigger look? And kind of scrap what we did?
No, no, we're not going to, we're not going back. At least that's not our intent, unless we hear something different from council. Our intent is to take the, the work you did on those foundational elements of a affordable housing requirement and, and just take those forward on their own. And then what council chooses to do with the South Riverside and Nike Hill code amendments will be a separate thing and what, you know, that won't be tied to that.
Okay. So there's enough of what we did that, that could be concepts and approaches that could be applicable citywide?
Yeah, beyond concepts. I mean, we developed specific code language that, that any rezone or other action that increases capacity could, could be used to, to include in an affordable housing requirement.
I'll kind of jump in here as people are still looking at it, thinking about, I'm sure people have other specific questions. But so tonight, or, I mean, is this more of kind of a discussion? Or by the end, are you wanting, for warning commissioners to basically give a, how they want to prioritize things? And then we come together as a commission to kind of come up with an idea? And what are you, what are you kind of foreseeing? And you guys thought about it, I mean, put this together?
There's no action item here, but we wanted to give the commission a chance to, to both review this and give any, any feedback that, that they wanted. So it doesn't have to be consensus feedback. It just, just anything that would kind of help us focus this for, for council of consideration.
Is it possible to do a column just of if the housing strategy attaches to any of these? As far as things that we talked about? I'm just curious of the things on our agenda. You know, all the things that we mapped out were the priorities. If there's a way to take this docket list and at least see whether we're hitting the things that we want to hit in the next two to three years?
Yeah, and.
It's obviously not going to be for all of them, because, you know, a wireless antenna. But, but for the ones that, whether we can just, the thing we just spent a lot of time on, whether this docket has some impact on hitting the things that we want to hit.
Yeah. In terms of the housing strategy or?
Yes, in terms, in terms of that, or the, yeah, the, the, the process we did with Arch.
So I think ideally we would have taken that to council prior to the docket. So they would have had a good understanding of that as they go through the overall docket. Unfortunately, we're not going to get, bring that to council until shortly after the docket. So we're flagging certain items in here that have to do with the housing strategy.
Okay.
That we're encouraging council to keep, move forward and, and then make a final determination after they've heard the housing strategy about how to prioritize them. So, so that's, that's how we're, we're approaching that.
Got it. And, and if it's not now, at some point, just to start mapping our priorities against those so that we can at least see, obviously these are things in the docket that need to get worked on. And there's a limited amount of time and resources to work on them. But it'd be helpful to see whether there's some, you know.
Yeah, and so I'm happening, I'm hoping that by the time we do bring the housing strategy to council, that they'll be able to kind of give us some good direction on, yes, let's move. We've already discussed these in the docketting session. Let's move forward with those in, in 2018. Here are some other ones that we think are important to, to tackle in 2019 or, or others that maybe they think are further out or lower priorities.
A couple of things, number 14, assign ordinance. I know that's something that we need to get taken care of before it becomes an issue for the legal team. Is that something that's going to be staff-intensive?
It could be. And it was initially, I think maybe in your packet, it was listed as a mandatory item. We've, we've, after consulting with our legal department, it's not, there's no state mandate that we do this. But we do recognize that we are at some, there's some degree of exposure. The city has some, there's some possibility of it being challenged. And so it's, it's really a question of how much, how much appetite the council has for, for that risk. And so, so, and then once we get into it, there's a question of whether we want to just focus on, on any aspects of our sign code that may run afoul of the recent court decision? Or if we want to take advantage of this examination of our sign code to really do a more broad upgrade of the sign code, which I think we think would be good to do. But again, it's a matter of whether that's a priority. So, so we're, we're looking for input from, on how to approach that. And then, and that'll help us determine how much effort will go into that. And also, this is not a solely a planning staff effort. We're going to need to engage our legal staff on this quite a bit.
Sounds like a wonderful law school student project. I don't know if we can get an intern in here and to support our city attorney to do the analysis. Because it's really, this is lends itself to that type of review. Because I'm sure our sign code is not like every other jurisdiction. And there's not going to be a one-size-fits-all approach that you can take from other jurisdictions that are solving this. Because we have to do a substantive review of our code against it and come up with probably specific recommendations that's just for us. But it seems like a, a wonderful second or third year law school, law student project, so.
I'll pass that on to our legal department. I know, I do know that they do bring interns in fairly regularly, I think.
On 15, it says staff recommends deferring this amendment to 2018, but in the staff proposed priority, it shows medium for 2019. Where, where do we stand on that?
I think it's just supposed to say 2019.
Okay.
I think, it might.
I think that'll probably.
For the.
Staff recommendation on 15.
Code amendments related to adult entertainment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're saying that, and again, that's going to be led by the, the legal department. And in our initial review, they agreed that it's probably not an urgent item.
I would agree. I think that's probably something that'll continue to get kicked down the road as it has in the past.
And so, and so, yeah, Commissioner Hampton was just saying like the bottom, it says 2018 under staff recommendation.
Oh, yeah, sorry. That's it.
All the way down on page 18, there's, there's page 13, item 18 is talking about administrative work to update online documents. Is that, is that kind of more of a filler sort of thing for you guys as time goes on?
Well, unfortunately it has been, and it just hasn't been getting done. Well, unfortunately it has been and it just hasn't been getting done. And it's something that actually we're working with a, a planning, we have a planning technician, temporary planning technician on staff who's helping at least get our red lines of that incorporated into the document that we can put online. And then we'll be working with code publishing to get that to be a fully integrated document online as part of our municipal code.
So it could be something that can be done without a lot of busy work for, for you to, for your, for our 2.1 FTEs.
It's, it's taking a fair amount of time and, but I think once, I think we're close to getting it to a point where we can pass it off to code publishing and, and it's, and then it's just a matter of, it's a, it's beyond our, our, their standard contract. So it'll be a, a cost item.
Oh, okay. And then is there kind of a date that you have in mind for when this should be done? I mean, if, if it's been, I mean, were you thinking, boy, we really, it's, I see it's high priority for this, this docket, but, or this, this year. But is it, is it something that you think, geez, we've really got to get this done by the end of the year or is it 2019? Or what, what do you, do you have a thought on that?
I think it was 2016. When we showed it.
So it's, it's urgent then?
Well, we've, we've been, I hear from mostly from fellow staff that, that have trouble. I mean, I send them the amendments as they come, but it, and also for potential applicants that are trying to find it online and they, so.
Well, I guess my, my question is, are there, are there sections of the online code that if, if, if a person were to use that as a review tool, that they would be misled by the code that's there, that it's not, it's not currently?
Yes.
There are?
Yeah.
And that's specific to the downtown plan or is there other sections?
Specific to the downtown plan.
And is there, is there some sort of note on the website that says this is not the most current version? I know there's a general disclaimer, I think, that it may not be, but that's the extent of it.
And, and of course, when we get contacted by a prospective developer, we, we fill them in on the relevant code amendments.
And there's access to the code, the actual code somewhere that isn't, it's just the online version that's out of date. Okay.
Question on number 16, the Wayne Golf Course. Talks about the deferred planning code amendment for the clubhouse area. Is that still what we're talking about or is this based on what has happened to the property since?
Well, we're not, no longer talking about the proposal to amend the code to allow whatever it was, 73 townhomes and an expanded clubhouse for the golf course. But since that code amendment had been initiated and, and some variation of that could serve to allow the kind of uses that they're starting to think about for the club, clubhouse area. We've kept it there as a, as a, so that we can move forward without, without initiating a separate code amendment. There's also a four or five acre portion of the back nine that's been set aside for potential other uses. And that'll require, you know, being, having a separate action. But, but it's, it's one that we just kind of kept, held on to because it, it may be useful to us going forward. The, so Parks Department knows about it. Our new assistant city manager who's going to be working on economic, economic development activities and, and looking into ways that we can use those two portions of that land to, to potentially generate some income to help maintain that overall area. They'll, they'll both be involved in that as well. There are prob, while, while we're on that section of other long range or strategic planning work items that aren't docket items, we, we probably could have listed a dozen other items there, at least a half a dozen other items. But those are the two that we had from last year.
So just a general consensus of the eight items that have planning commission action for 2018. It seems like four, six and 10 are the most time intensive. So obviously Canyon Park, the lean initiatives, depending on what policies we look at and landscape. I mean, if that turns into something similar to what we did with trees, that could be a pretty time consuming aspect. Do you see other things sneaking into the 2018 docket as far as planning commission's concerned that's not in this packet? Or do you think this is the totality of what we'll see?
Well, we're recommending the comprehensive update to the landscape regulations for 2019. So the, so, and you've already done the work on those foundational housing, affordable housing requirement code amendments. But there could well be other items that would come out of that discussion with council that they'll pick out of the housing strategy that they'll, they'll want us to, that'll be appropriate to take back to planning commission. Possibly. It might be more likely that, that they would identify items to bring back in the 2019 docket. But that, those, that's what kind of comes to, to my mind. I think the parking code regulations, I think council will continue to keep those to themselves. Unless there's some twist on that that they, they think is appropriate to have planning commission consider.
Kind of a, just a couple of general thoughts and maybe ideas. So I, I think getting back to Commissioner Hampton's question earlier with regards to like one meeting a month. It, it does seem like, not that I think we're all in the, all here to like have meetings, to have meetings for meeting sake. But there is so much going on in Bothell right now and it would be great to be given the opportunity as the commission to meet more regularly. I mean, I, I understand the whole, the FTE thing. So I guess some of the ideas I have, or the thought, the thought I had would be to be, get a little creative. You, you guys always put together such amazing packets and presentations and we're, and it gives us a lot of information to be able to make good decisions on topics that are affecting community and looking forward. But I was wondering if maybe we can start hitting on, you know, some of these topics, even like Commissioner, like Commissioner Clarkson. Some of these topics that are bigger, but we can just kind of start talking about them. It's not that, and, and maybe it's because once we talk about a topic, we need to revisit it, you know, within a certain mere period of time or we basically have to start over again. But it would be nice to just start kind of touching on some of the smaller stuff, but we can even just break it out. And if it's something that takes like four or five hours of your time or three or four hours, you can put together a very small presentation. You know, it could, it doesn't even, you know, it could just be a, I don't know, that we could start kind of ticking some things off and be able to kind of continue to meet regularly. But I also understand the responsibilities you guys have with the, the two big projects you guys are both working on. Do you have any, I mean, any thoughts on, on that? Like, like for instance, like just even on the, I mean, it's weird because you want to, you want to get the ones that are the highest priority first. But unfortunately, some of those with the highest priority also are taking so much time that we have to kind of defer them. But if, even if there were ones that we kind of combine, that would only take you guys, you know, a few hours, like the wireless one, just ones like that, we can kind of tick out of here and kind of make some, keep some progress and keep some kind of.
I actually, oh, I was going to say, it's a great suggestion. Unfortunately, I don't think I've processed a code amendment in the last 15 years. It only took me a few hours. And the reason for that is because not only do, when we bring you some language, we have to make sure it is internally consistent with the rest of our regulations and our company's plan. We also make sure, have to make sure it works from a development services standpoint. Okay. Tree retention is a classic example. Okay. We got to make sure that everybody can understand what that means. So what that means is we have to have meetings with folks and they have to have a chance to review things. Those all add hours and timeframe to the provisions. Now, having said that, there are some items that we can bring forward rather quickly. But part of it is the juggling act that Dave and I have been faced with the last year and a half. And that is that these big items do require incredibly intense work time. Canyon Park is, you know, hundreds and hundreds of hours and a lot of it is not seen, i.e. it's coordination with other groups. It's, it's basically writing a report. It's creating some, it's communicating with the emails and feedback. So a lot of that stuff is not seen, but we want to bring the planning commission more items as, as we can. In fact, we're talking about what we're going to do in February. We're going to have that discussion a little bit later on this evening. But it, it is hard for us to bring a lot of information. And partly the reason why we create such good packets and those things is because it's not just to bring the planning commission up to speed. Cause the commission is, you know, you guys are, are on top of these kind of things. It's also to let the public have some information. So they need a little bit more background than, than you, than you, than you folks. They were going to need, okay, well, small cells, how come this is important? So we have to kind of explain that aspect as well. So there's, it's more than just, you know, our direct technical communication. We also have to have a public communication as well. So this all adds time to these, these type of items. I do think that we can be a little more brief in our, in our analysis at times. And I think we're going to try and do that as we go through this year.
One other thing on the, the small cells, the legal department and executive department have a consultant working on that. And we're, we're kind of waiting for some recommendations to come out of that and then that, that we can bring forward.
It, it seems like a lot of this stems down from, I think, direction from the city council in the form of them determining the budget and how much budget they allot to this sort of work, long range planning and that kind of thing. And it seems to me that they've, they've kind of spoken by, by making that decision. And so you got, what you've done is presented them with, and us with this priority and, and that for the most part, I think we should follow your judgment on that and let you guys work on the things you think are most critical and that you've already communicated. But I think it, that really the solution would be to, if there, if, if there's an interest in getting more of these things done, the solution is to, is to budget more money toward getting the people on board that can do that. And so I'm not sure that we have a lot of control over that other than, you know, relying on you guys to work as hard as you can and do the most efficient job you can. And I don't have any doubt about whether or not that's happening. So. I, I, I as a, I would say that if you guys, if this is what you guys have prioritized and, and you think is, is the way it ought to be done, the order it ought to be done, I, I would need to, I think, bring something pretty compelling to the table to, to, to change, to make a change to that. I guess is my just general idea. I, you know, but whether or not the information is organized differently or, you know, that, that item that's way back in item 18 on page 13, that's a high priority, maybe that could be brought to the front even, even just because you may not have a hard time finding it as you work your way through this. But as a general rule, I think the way you guys have done things is, is pretty effective. So thank you for that.
I mean, here's something maybe to throw out. Would we as a commission want to lend support behind having the council revisit? Putting some more funding towards giving you all more help, more assistance. I mean, cause I mean, we have in the past, we've given them ideas with regards to clustering and tree retention. I mean, is that, I mean, something we could propose? I mean, obviously they can, it just is saying, we want to meet, we're ready to work on a lot of these issues, but it's a staffing issue. It'd be really great if, if there was more funding for the long range, a long range planning. And so we could, we could start getting through more of these, I guess, more of these items that they're expecting us to work on eventually. I don't know.
How, how far in advance is that decision about funding made? I'm assuming it's probably too late for 2018 to do, to do that. Is that?
Well, neither Dave or I are huge budget experts, but you know, this is a discussion that we can have with the city manager and get some input on that. We can convey to the city manager, look, the commission is worried about being able to keep themselves busy and, and get some of these things done more timely than they have before. And, and you know, let, let, you know, Ms. Ms. Phillips take a look at that because that's one of the things that she does. That's one of her expertise is, okay, all these competing interests and you know, this is not the only department that's kind of stretched right now. I mean, I think all of them are. And so the idea is you just have to try and do the best you can with the resources you have in place.
But I see, I see David's point is what I, if it's the right one, I'm thinking of the, the clustering ordinance discussion was something that the council decided we're going to, was it that one that they decided we're going to kind of let that slide? And then we, we made a determined effort to go back and say, hey, can you reconsider that? This is really important to us. It may, and, and, and that was, I remember the discussion around that was that we were, we were just trying to reiterate why we thought it was important. And that was just a statement for them to consider. We could do a similar thing. And maybe it doesn't take effect in 2018, but as a planning commission, we could say, hey, we think you need to put more, more emphasis on looking at the budget and trying to fund more things so more of this stuff can get done. Cause it is a little disconcerting to me to find out that we've got code online that's been there since 2009 that's out of date. You know, that's, you know, to me, that, that's something that we, that should be important to us. And if we need to dedicate a little bit more funding to do that, so maybe we could get together and craft some sort of statement as a planning commission that says, council, we, we are recommending, one of our recommendations to you is to, to look at that again. I don't know. Is that, is that something that people would be in agreement with?
Or nothing else to make it a priority for 2019?
And that's what I'm saying. I, I, like I said, I think it might be a little late to do something this year. But to say, hey, in the future, when you're going through the budget for 2019 and confirming that, our recommendation is think a little bit harder about helping us out with long range planning. To me, this is one of the most important aspects of the, of the city in terms of making sure that we're viable in the future.
I, I'm in total support of that. And I think we should, if, if we can craft a letter, at least a strong recommendation. You know, I've only been a Bothell resident for 11 and a half years now, and it's a vastly different place from when I moved here 11 years ago as far as the complexity. And if you think about the growth, that's the wave of growth that's emanating from Seattle right now, that's going to wash over us. And if we don't figure out some of these planning things very soon, you know, we will have missed the boat to have done the planning. Like if Canyon Park takes three years because, or two years because of staff to, staff time to really implement it in the way we want. And you know, people have already kind of repurposed and, you know, there's new expectations in properties and they can't really take advantage of that. Then, then it's going to be a waste of time. And so it, it seems to me to, and I, I say this with some sensitivity. I don't know your two long range plans, you know, with the city is, but with Tom's retirement, I mean, you are a wealth of, both of you are a wealth of knowledge. I mean, I've known Bruce since the planning commission, my first, or Parks Board since I joined in 2007. To even have it a long run of time to have somebody working with you guys to offload, to know, you know, what's, what are the, you know, that's the stuff that doesn't show up in these reports that you do of kind of, I know when you told us, when we did Doug Allen Sportsfield, you go, I remember when we got that and we did this there. And you kind of told us the history of Doug Allen Sportsfield, what was there before it got redeveloped. And, and anyway, so that's, I think that's, that'd be a huge priority.
Are you talking about the potential for kind of losing that historical knowledge if these two guys, if we wait so long that they're retired?
If you hire somebody late, like five years from now, I mean, just it, it's, it's, it's a complex place. And, and every part of the city has history, you know, constituents' interest, and that's just not something you can just like plug into.
So really what we're asking is if you guys can spend 80 to 100 hours putting a memo together, then would it allow us to make a recommendation to the council?
We've done it before.
I guess I, we're not, I'm conscious.
Can we create our own, I mean, can we create and circulate?
That's what we need to do.
Okay.
No, I was, that's, yeah, I think, I think we should maybe, if there's somebody who wants to take that upon themselves, I don't know how this would work. I think we kind of all know what that is. And if there's a certain person who wants to come up with a certain version and then people can kind of chime in and craft it and then.
I would nominate Dave Wickwire to create a draft for us.
I'm happy to do, to start it. I, what I don't know is from an open meetings process, how do we circulate that? Cause I know we can't really do real.
Give it back. I, I was also thinking about you as well. So, but whomever it's going to be, I think that person just gives it back to you guys. And then we'll, I don't.
What, what would happen is that if you draft something, what we do is we take that draft and then we distribute to the council, sorry, commission in a meeting. And then the commission discusses the draft, identifies changes, and then that is finalized. But we have to do that in a meeting itself. So.
And I can't individually go to everybody.
No.
I can go to two others.
That's a serial, that's a serial.
Yeah, that's a serial meeting. I remember that training. So I can go to two others and get feedback. Got it. Okay.
And, and of course you can individually. And, and of course, you can individually, you know, contact council members or, you know. So it's a little bit awkward for us to be in the middle of that kind of lobbying effort. But the other thing I wanted to bring though is, uh, we will have a new director coming on board soon. So that's, I mean, the, the new director will also have his ideas about how to organize the department. So, um, so it is a good time to, to, to weigh in on those kind of issues.
I can't remember if it was in the Planning Commissioner or on the Parks Board, but there was a situation that was kind of similar to this where we actually created a little subcommittee. So it was three people that, that worked on that together. And then they presented it to Bruce or whoever it was at the meeting. So that might be something that, that we could do, so those three people could bounce it around and flesh out a draft and then send that out. Just to get a little more horsepower.
I would appreciate that, so.
Yeah, just make sure you don't share it with one other commission member. It just has to be within that committee. And then the committee reports the, the body as a whole.
Yep.
And that would be how you have to do it.
I'm comfortable with that, uh, if, for the people here are. And then we can decide on who the three people are, if everybody else hears.
I, I agree. I think we do need to commit tonight to who that person on that committee is gonna kind of take the lead on that. It sounds like.
I'm happy to take the lead, yeah.
Sounds like you're interested in doing that. If we did do that, just in, again, being cognizant of your time, could we just add that as a discussion item at one of these future, well, the future meeting in February perhaps? So that's, which is, you know, that's twenty, I don't remember what that date is, twenty first?
Yes.
And then that doesn't require you to schedule and attend another separate meeting? Is that?
And, and I think that was what we do would be a report from members or something like that. We'd put, we'd, we'd actually put that in the agenda item. Okay, discussion about planning commission letter to city manager about, you know, staffing levels and long-range planning division.
I don't know if we need to nominate that committee, but I'm happy to participate in it.
It would, it would be good to have the three individuals identified and again, in an open session.
Great.
That was awkward.
I, I, I don't even, it looks, I'm, I'm okay with the two people who've already, I mean, if, unless there's other people, is there any other people who want to be involved with the crafting of?
So do we have Dave and Eric at this point? Does that?
Unless anybody has any other.
I would also like to invite Mr. Hampton to join that. Second.
I can do that.
Great.
So I think that letter in conjunction with the hour projections that you guys put together for the city council meeting, I mean, if you're showing that you have forty-five hundred hours worth of work for two thousand and eighteen, and we have twenty-four hundred available hours, it's gonna help kind of paint the picture of deficit that we're, that you guys are looking at.
And since I'm not gonna be part of, of the three there, um, I think everybody's okay with the three people. I don't think I have to vote or anything on it, do we? I mean, just, um, is that, uh, I, um, Commissioner Wickwire's point earlier in that, if you could, in that memo, one thing I would hope to maybe add is that to be really creative and maybe they can bring in people either, you know, I guess, consultant staff or, I mean, short-term staff or, and or maybe something like a law school intern, some, some other ways of going about maybe examining some of these topics. I mean, think about it, I guess.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, this, I think is, my, my opinion is that this needs to be specific of an FTE. That's a third leg to the stool here versus, I mean, I think specific things you can bring in, like the sign project, bring in somebody specific for that, but.
Or, or a portion of an FTE done as.
Or a portion of FTE, yeah. If there's another thing, like somebody that's got a tech background that can kind of manage getting our, another person to be involved. I mean, that type of thing, um, because I didn't realize there's code from two thousand and nine, which would.
And I feel like we should get to at least or above what we were before with everything that's going on. Like you, I mean, the, I mean, there's, there's more going on, on, in Bothell today than ever. So we should at least be where we were before, I would think.
Just, doesn't help much, but just to clarify, the, the online code includes amendments through, uh, two thousand and eleven. It just doesn't include.
Great.
So Commissioners Wickwire, Hampton, and Vice Chair Clark are gonna get together and they'll bring us back something on the twenty-first? Is that worth, okay?
And the other thing beyond staffing, we're also looking for resources for consultants, particularly for the Canyon Park effort for the.
Yeah, I think we should include, I, I don't know if the definition of FTE, FTE includes a consultant, probably not. So we should broaden it to be not just FTEs, but is that what you're getting at?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And a quick question, um, off that topic, um, on the Shoreline Master Plan. So Bruce, you were saying you're probably gonna bring us something back with regards to that maybe later this year?
Well, the Shore, the, the Shoreline Master Program update would be concern, controlled, would be reviewed by the Shoreline Board. And so that's basically a board that we were, we're gonna have.
And how are we doing on that board? We don't have, is there still a full board or?
Well, the, the previous board, uh, the, all their terms expired because we were done. I mean, in two thousand and twelve. So, uh, we have to basically recruit and get that board back up to strength. And we have until probably latter part of this year to do that. So I think we've got time to do that.
Okay.
Just for a clarification, this letter will be addressed to the city manager, not the council, right?
I think it should be the city manager, yes.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, and then copy the council.
Anybody have any more general or specific top, um, comments? And so, so with that, I would guess that, I mean, the commission has kind of spoken to a lot of these topics. It does look like, let's see if I can get back to this other page here. It sounded like we liked the, the order of which it was in. We didn't have any big disagreements on anything, right? No big, nothing jumped out that really needs to be pushed up a lot. Okay.
Going back to the letter, what's the deadline for a fi- a final version to get in our packet? Is it the Friday before? When do you have, just so we can walk.
Actually, it is the Thursday morning before.
Okay, so Wednesday, essentially end of business Wednesday.
Wednesday, yes. And then we can, we can get it to the commission, uh, for that.
Valentine's Day.
Twenty-first day, yes, indeed.
Okay, so for the February, there's a February twenty-first meeting and then, okay, so Valentine's Day.
All right, I guess with that, the, we're concluding the study session.
Can I ask a quick, clarifying question? So on that twenty-first for that meeting with the Canyon Park update, is there, um, is there a large volume of material that you guys have kind of collected today that, that we're gonna be looking through? Or how do you see that? Or is it mostly?
Yes.
Okay, so is there a way we could have you guys work harder? Just kidding, don't hit me. Um, is there a way we can get that a little bit earlier than, you know, maybe a couple more days to look through? Uh, if, if you think it's gonna be a lot of material.
A large amount of background is on our webpage right now, our Canyon Park webpage. You'll get just about everything that the stakeholders have received except for the final report, which is still outside, out there.
All right, reports from staff.
We, we have a couple of things here. Isn't that amazing? One of which, of course, is the Canyon Park Regional Center update. And of course, we kind of talked about that quite a bit already. However, I just want to let you know that we are working to have the visiting process closed. You're gonna look at some really fun stuff, there's some really interesting and intriguing elements within these reports that we have. And then we're gonna go on to the next phase, which is the planning code amendment discussion. And that's gonna be a lot of detailed information that the commission and the council will both get into. And we're really looking forward to getting that process started because the Canyon Park area is so important. And we didn't realize how important it was, not just to the local economy, but the regional economy. We're talking about a huge employer base out there that does stuff internationally. So anyway, it's, it's, it's a really fascinating topic that we're, we're really excited to be getting into, so.
Bruce, you've mentioned, I, I was shocked when you said forty-seven hundred jobs.
Isn't that amazing?
How does that compare to, for example, the North Creek, uh, area over there?
North Creek's got a bunch as well. And I think maybe one of the things that, when we get into this discussion, I want to make sure I understand that, that the community understands that North Creek is no second fiddle at all. There's a lot of manufacturing jobs out there as well.
Is, is it, does it approach that in terms of the number of jobs that are in that area?
Not too far behind. It's not quite as many. But Canyon Park has been super successful. The North Creek area has also been very successful. So, I mean, it's, there's, there's no slouch at that point at all. They are, they have a bunch of really awesome firms that do very, very similar things. The next report, of course, is, uh, as we kind of mentioned earlier, the council, excuse me, the council did adopt two planning commission recommendations last Tuesday night. First, of course, is the final plats. I'll start with that one. That went through very well. And the other one was the tree retention code amendment that the planning commission crafted. Basically increases the number of trees that would be retained on a site, clarifies a bunch of provisions within that, those regulations. The council did make one kind of, kind of really noticeable tweak. And that was that when staff was going through this stuff, we said, you know, we have enough projects where we have trees that are located right where you have to have infrastructure, particularly roads, utilities and things like that. And so we credit the situation where in consultation with the public works director, the community development director can reduce that standard by applying some of the alternative approaches that the commission identified. You know, save smaller trees or plant new trees. So, uh, and the council looked and said, yeah, it makes a lot of sense because, you know, an applicant can't control where his site distance roadway intersection has to be. And, and can't control what the utilities are, so. But for the most part, it's the planning commission recommendation that was adopted. So, uh, uh, very well received and good job.
How, how long does it take typically for something like that to get up on the, uh, the website code?
Code publishing usually gets that done real quick. That's a code publishing issue, so we just sent it right to code publishing.
So within a couple of weeks, you thought?
Probably less than that even. Yeah, about a week and a half to two weeks. And again, it becomes effective today, as a matter of fact, that new regulation. And so we've distributed all to our development services folks. They're starting to implement it now. And I've actually sent it to four or five interested parties, you know, on the outside, developers, applicants, engineering firms, stuff like that. So the word is spreading pretty quickly that there is some new regulations in place for that, on that topic.
Thank you.
You want to talk about planning calendar? Oh, final plats? Uh, oh, the one thing I just, I think I did identify, I'm not sure if that, the one change that was made was that instead of just the community development director being the one who approved final plats, it would decide to make that a joint responsibility of public works and community development director, so they both sign off on it. But again, it's gonna be an administrative process, gonna save huge amount, number of hours for our development services folks.
And then I, I touched on, uh, the, the main recent council action that I've been involved with, which was the campus master plan. So although that since didn't go through Planning Commission, it, it definitely will have some impacts for, uh, how downtown develops. The biggest change that they made in the master plan is, um, in the long term, they're gonna reorient to a certain degree the campus towards Beardsley Boulevard. And, and rather than a campus that's kind of set back in the green, uh, it's actually gonna have an urban face, uh, on Beardsley Boulevard. And, uh, and we think that's gonna help, uh, connect the campus better to downtown by, by making that an activity center. So, and, and there are other, uh, aspects of that in the, um, development agreement, uh, some specific actions to improve those corridors, uh, between the campus and downtown, so.
Is, is the campus, it's technically in the downtown suburb, isn't it?
Correct.
Okay. So does that get wrapped in at all to the suburb area plan or is it just?
The, the campus, uh, part of that, that whole thing included a, some, uh, relatively small changes to the comprehensive plan portion of the downtown plan, the, the community vision for the campus district. And, uh, and then there was, were a number of code amendments. Previously, the downtown plan, uh, pages on the campus district just said, uh, that development is controlled by the planned unit development. And then had some carryover language from the old, uh, campus corridor and North Creek, uh, subarea plan. It used to be in the North Creek subarea. Um, now we've created a full, uh, uh, set of, of development regulations for, uh, campus development that will guide that. So it's a little different than the formatting and, and the way we're, we do it for the other districts.
So it's still its own unique district?
It's still a, a separate district in downtown, yeah.
With that new campus facing Beardsley, they talked about some retail opportunities. Is that restricted at all?
Yeah, we, we did, uh, put some size, overall size limits, um, uh, consistent with what they're, what they're anticipating. Bookstore, um, uh, small, you know, small-scale retail and, and small-scale eating, uh, eateries, yeah.
Are there any restrictions on types of businesses?
As long as they can make a case that it's, uh, related to their educational, um. Mission.
Okay. Thanks.
Maybe this is obvious, but is all that development on that campus assumed to be under the ownership of, of U-Dub or Cascadia? By the words, and they're not gonna sell parcels off to private developers or is that just to be determined?
Well, they're not, I, I, no, they won't be selling parcels off. They, uh, don't currently own the property that Husky Hall is on, that they have that under a long-term lease. And there is a chance that they're, they anticipate that they will eventually acquire that. But there's a chance that they won't. And, um, so we had to address that in the, in the plan too. So while in that area, uh, the campus agreed, they're not gonna put any, um, student housing. If, if the Franciscans decide to keep that, uh, it wouldn't be fair to take away that entitlement that they had under the, uh, old general downtown corridor zoning. So, so that's, that's the only part of the campus that I think really could realistically change, and, and I think that's unlikely.
Thanks for the updates, um, from staff. Um, any reports from members?
Hang on one sec. Did you get through C, the planning commission calendar?
Yeah, first thing, we don't have a lot more detail to offer, uh, and like, I know you would prefer to have at least two months, uh, going out. But, uh, I think we will likely have a follow-on to that, uh, February twenty-first meeting, uh, uh, happening in March. And then, um, but again, until we, we get direction from council at March, on March sixth on the docket, we, we do have some items that have carried over from, from last year. But, um, uh, we're kind of waiting for, for further direction before we start, start in on new items.
Actually, that would probably be item number six. And it is item number F. Actually, you'd be getting some miscellaneous coding and everything, so.
Okay.
February twenty-first and then we don't know after that? Or is it?
We, we don't know for sure, but I think it's gonna be, uh, probably the middle or later part of March.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a, it's a leap year. We're leaping over that last weekend.
A couple of days. I just couldn't figure out why the six was not a Thursday, but then I looked closer.
Sorry about that.
Okay, any reports from members? Is there some questions with regards to the calendar still? Okay.
I was just explaining it to Eric.
Okay.
That is appreciated.
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.